All right. Good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council meeting, today's regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, October 27, 2021, and it is 6:00 PM.
And thank you, American system with state law while a state of emergency remains active. This meeting will be conducted by teleconference only. The meeting location will be at 8400 Laguna Palms Way in the City Council Chamber, but the chamber will not be open to the public. This meeting, the Elk Grove City Council, will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, October 29 at 1:00 PM, and Sunday, October 31 at 6:00 PM. It's being closed captioned. It'll be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on a particular Notice Agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. In the Zoom environment, a speaker timer will be displayed, counting down the three-minute time. For callers connecting directly via telephone, they can utilize the raise hand feature, which is available in the Zoom environment, by pressing star nine on their phone, which will effectively raise their hand from their phone line. And the city clerk will run a speaker timer. And after the first two minutes have passed for those phone callers, a single bell ding will sound to inform you one minute remains for your comments. And then, when the total three-minute time concludes, a series of bells will sound. As we do in the teleconference environment for any of our roll call actions or any votes that we take, we do those verbally. And so, as we move into the call to order and roll call, I will be starting the roll call verbally with Councilmember Spees.
Present.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Councilmember Soon.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yeah.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
And we have 5:00. We have a full set of the council here for our meeting this evening.
All right. Next item, we have our Pledge of Allegiance. Leading us this evening is Councilmember Spees.
Please stand. Hand over heart pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now, would you please all join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. All right, next item. A motion to approve the agenda.
Yep, to Section 2.
So moved, Hume.
With the motion, the second for the approval of the agenda, I will start that roll call vote with Councilmember Spees.
Hi.
Councilmember Hume.
Hi.
Councilmember Soon.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
With a 5:00 vote, we have an agenda before us.
All right, great. Next item, please.
For Section 3, the closed session, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda that will take us and advance us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements, starting with Item 4.1, which is the Diversity and Inclusion Commission Annual Update.
Great. Do we have our commissioners?
Yeah, I'm here, Mayor.
Hi, hi, Dr. Park.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council members. So may I have permission to do small presentation for?
Yes, sir. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you so much. Great. So first of all, on behalf of our commission, I would like to thank all of you for giving us this opportunity to update you about what we have done this year. Despite of COVID restriction, we were able to do all the meetings virtually. We maintain social distancing and follow the rules, county rules. And we remain very proactive and brought many events this year. Now, what are the rules as a commissioner? First is, we are, you know, trying to promote educational activities to bring awareness of our city's diversity. And we also serve as ambassador for our city. We also provide feedback to the City Council. Get your feedback and do try our best to bring, you know, quality events to promote our cultural diversity. Now, as stated, we've met regularly every month. We had, you know, a couple hours of virtual meeting. And this year, we participated in many events virtually, some in-person, keeping, following the social distancing rule. We participated in an anti-hate rally, which was organized by OCA. We tried to promote and brought proclamation for Juneteenth, Pride Month, and Diversity Month. And we brought different speakers to talk to us about different issues. Example, last month, we brought mental health professionals to talk about mental issues affecting our city and what we can do to help out our citizens. We talked about suicide prevention strategy. We also brought a city expert to talk to us about 2020 census data overview. And they explained to us how they will relocate resources, keeping in mind the recent data on census. We also invited group leaders from Elk Grove Agent Artners. In fact, Artner Group is doing an amazing event. They're planning this weekend. Next slide. Every year, we do multicultural festival in Elk Grove Park where we have almost 10,000-plus participants. But this year, what we did, we broke down the whole event into smaller event. And we conducted activities throughout the month of August. It was a very successful event. We had events targeting all, you know, age group, including kids, senior citizens, with different musical groups. We had art show, kids' culture, art workshop. We did a dining week, diversity dining week. So we got an amazing response from the community. And we are very thankful to city staff and your support. So residents were able to enjoy the world's diversity without leaving the city of Elk Grove.
Next slide. Dr. Park, you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Now we have you back. So, and I think we lost you just after we switched over to this slide with the Diversity Month events, Food Truck Mania. So if you want to commence from there, please proceed.
Thank you for correcting me. So these are the pictures which we'd like to share with you. This is a food truck media we had this month of August. And you can see a lot of folks participated. They had a great time. Next slide. And then we did a weekly activity at neighborhood markets. We brought different cultural groups, dance groups. We had a booth set up at the entrance, and we gave over different goodies promoting cultural diversity. And we had a big banners displayed throughout the neighborhood markets. And we got a really good feedback from the community. They really, those activities. And I know all of you came at different time and enjoyed and participated. Next slide. Next slide, please. Yeah, this is again now pictures from the neighborhood markets celebrating Diversity Month in August. We also had a great participation regarding kids' art and adult art show. Art show, basically workshop. We did a workshop for the kids and all, you know, citizens. Next slide. These are some numbers. You can see how much interest our event have generated in the community through our sponsors, local iHeartRadio. We got 150,000 impression, 2,000 social media engagement, 1,100 plus event engage, event page impression. We had 1,000-plus guests at our food truck media. We had eight different dance group and band groups. We had three media partners, 115, 1,500 market attendees, and 149 radio promotions. So it was an overall very productive and awesome month. It was a very successful month. And this year, we started this called Cultural Connection Educational Series where we wanted to promote specific or different cultures. So this year, we decided to celebrate Heritage Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, and we invited local citizens kind of as storytellers to share their tradition, culture, their influences which saved their lives. And it was a very successful event, which was organized on September 30. And I know all of you came, so thank you so much for your support and participation. And we continue to do more such event in the future. And I'm very thankful to our commissioners, especially Tina Jessica Carter, Dr. Hess, and Kristen for supporting and, you know, organizing that event. So moving forward, next year, we will do more Cultural Connections Workshop, and we'll continue to do more outreach activity, will bring more creative events. And we are, you know, open to any feedback, suggestions you may have for us. And without your city's support, city staff, and without the support from our fellow commissioners, I don't think we could have done all these activities. So I'm very thankful to all of you, especially city staff, mayor, city council members, my fellow commissioners, and our vice chair, Jessica Carter.
Is that the last slide, Dr. Park? Oh, there we go. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so this are some, last slide is about our Diversity Inclusion Commission's picture. But I'm open for any comments, suggestions, feedback you may have for us.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and start. Thank you again for your presentation. Always great to see the work that you do with the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. I know you all work so hard, being such tremendous ambassadors for our city. So I don't have any questions. I just want to commend you for your service and all of the commissioners. You just do incredible, incredible work. Specifically, I really enjoyed that, the new, the Cultural Connections. It's the first time that we've had that event.
Yes.
And it was definitely one of my more favorite events where we really got to hear from some local leaders about their own experiences in this country and their journey. And it's been quite remarkable hearing from them and just so inspiring. And I applaud all of you for the work and your adaptability during COVID and being able to still produce some great work here and keep some of the traditions going. And I think, you know, you did a great job implementing the song, the dance, the food, the art, the storytelling in very unique ways. So thank you, everyone. I see Councilmember Soon's hand is raised. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couldn't have said it better myself. I just want to add my thank you, Dr. Park, and to the members of the commission. But I also just want to say that, you know, we, as a council, as a city, we've, we've set this, this tone, this mantra, that we are not only a diverse city, but we're an inclusive city, inclusive for all, we're integrated. But we can't uphold that culture on our own, you know, just the five of us here. It has to be done, you know, throughout, whether it's staff, our residents, and you guys, your commission, do such a great job in helping us uphold that theme through the work that you do. And so, we're extremely grateful, as the mayor said, for your continued service and your passion in this realm. I mean, Bob, and you know, you've been active in this a long time. And so, I know how, how much it means to you and the rest of the commissioners are the same. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Soon. Councilmember Hume.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo the comments that have been made by the mayor and by Councilmember Soon. I didn't make it out to all of those events that you showed pictures of, but the ones that I did make it out to, just had an extraordinary time and was great seeing the participation. I actually came to the art event twice because I came the day that it was canceled because I think it was the fires, and then came back for the actual event itself. And I have to agree with the mayor that I think the storytellers event really rose to the top, not just in the content that it provided, but also just the overall professionalism in how it was presented. It just was a really top-notch event. And I want to say that all of the commissions that, that we have here in the city do great work, but really, the amount of value add that the DEI Commission brings and what you do for the community can't be overstated. So thank you, Dr. Park.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Spees.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Dr. Park, I just wanted to add in my appreciation for you and of course, for the rest of the commission. It does take a lot of time to do these, to do these events and these meetings and to actually reach out into the community and to let people know that this is, this is the culture that we're trying to, to build and maintain here in Elk Grove. So I just want to thank you all very much for your time, and I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Thank you. I can't figure out how to raise my hand. I was just gonna.
I need to go to you anyway. I got you.
My camera's not working on this laptop again. But, Dr. Bobbin, thank you so much. You and the commissioners really took leadership. And when we decided to change what this group was going to be called and just taking what we had and what we were going through and making it something that our community can enjoy, can be educated on, and can come to. I've enjoyed working with you on a personal level on fighting the COVID-19 and making sure everybody stays healthy and safe. But I've also enjoyed working with you in this realm as well, too. And I appreciate you and the entire team and the commissioners for everything that you've done. I know it takes a lot of time. I know it takes a lot of evenings. And I just want you to know that we appreciate what you're all doing for our community here.
So much.
Dr. Park, do you have any other commissioners joining that wanted to say comments before we move on?
I think I'm not aware of anyone joining, but thank you so much for bringing this platform. One last comment.
Yes, sir.
Hello?
Yep, you're still there. Oh.
So one comment I want to make, during our Diversity Month, we had a guest, not only from City of Elk Grove, but there were folks from Rockland, Roseville, Folsom came, and they were so impressed and gave us a good feedback. And then, this year, I got so many phone calls from different cities asking how we are functioning, you know, what we do to bring all these innovative activities. So it's bringing attention of different communities, different cities. And I'm very proud of our work, what we do for our city.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your continued service. Did you say there were any other commissioners before we move on?
I think that's what I've been told. Let me see if I see anyone here.
I did, I do know that Ms. Tina Lee Voat is online in our attendee list. And we can.
Sure.
And she's got a hand up, so let's see if we can make that happen. So.
Wonderful. Thanks for bringing to my.
And Ms. Lee Voat will be bringing you in so that you can address the council. You just need to unmute on your side, and it looks like you have.
It's like an evening. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be part of this commission. And thank you so much for really the kind words about the Cultural Connections. That was really a project that I was really proud to be able to work with the commission on. It was really great to see all of the council members that attended. And I'm just so happy that, that you enjoyed it. And I'm really looking forward to working with the commission and continuing the really great work they do, especially the leadership with our chair and our vice chair bring to it. So thanks so much for the recognition.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Tina, for your comments.
All right. Well, thank you once again on behalf of the council for all of your hard work and service and dedication to our city. Thank you again. With that, we will move on to our next item.
That will take us on to Item 4.2, which is a proclamation recognizing October 2021 as Filipino-American History Month.
All right, wonderful. Let's see. I know that we have some community representatives here, but as we know, October 2021 is Filipino-American History Month. And I will read the proclamation that you see on your screen. Whereas this is an appropriate time to promote and reflect on the richness of Filipino and Filipino-American history and culture and to provide all Americans with the opportunity to learn, honor, and appreciate Filipino-American identity and their historic and social contributions to the fabric of the United States of America. And whereas it is necessary to instill in our youth the importance of education, history, and self-determination in creating eminent role models in establishing a proud cultural identity and producing exceptional citizens of this nation. And whereas the earliest documented evidence of Filipinos in the continental United States occurred on October 18, 1587, when mariners, under Spanish command, referred to as, and I, again, forgive me if I'm pronouncing it wrong, Luzonius Indios landed in Morro Bay, California. And the Filipino-American National Historical Society recognizes the year 1763 as the date of the first permanent Filipino settlement in the United States in St. Malo, Louisiana. And whereas immigrants from the Philippines and their families truly have enriched our nation, state, and city through their work and contributions in agriculture, their service in the armed forces, their offerings, skills, and expertise as engineers, scientists, entrepreneurs, accountants, teachers, lawyers, nurses, and doctors, and their, and their participation in public offices, civic affairs, and community activities. And whereas today, the Filipino-American community is the third-largest Asian-American group in the United States with an estimated population of 4,200,000 people, second-largest Asian-American group in California. And the 15,000-strong Filipino community plays a vital role in the city of Elk Grove's rich history, thereby helping to shape its development and landscape. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims October 2021 as Filipino-American History Month in the city of Elk Grove and encourages the community to celebrate, reflect, learn, honor, and appreciate Filipino-American identity and the historic and social contributions made to the fabric of the United States of America, signed this 22nd day of October 2021. I would like to invite up, we have representatives from our Filipino-American community. I'd like to invite Vince Salas, Robin Rodriguez, and Megan Sappigao, if you are online.
So I'm here, Mayor Singh Allen, Robin, and Dr. Rodriguez and Megan Sappigao are at another community meeting. But I'm here to say a few words, if you will.
Absolutely.
Good evening to everyone. I'm Vince Salas, 15-year resident of Elk Grove. Thank you, Mayor Singh Allen, and the City Council for the proclamation and resolution that recognizes October as Filipino-American Heritage Month. We really appreciate your support of our community, Mayor Singh Allen, when you joined us as we unveiled the Filipino-American Health and Well-being Survey and for stopping by at Tabagka Isa, or Unite, event last Friday at Laguna Town Hall. This resolution is important for us, as it's the first time, I believe, that we're organized to make this happen in Elk Grove. And coincidentally, one of the most iconic leaders, Larry Ed Leong, of our community is also being inducted posthumously into the California Hall of Fame. We really appreciate your support because we believe it's important for everyone to be seen as part of the diversity of Elk Grove. And we look forward to continuing our work to civically engage in the vibrant life of our community. Thank you again for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Salas, and just want to commend you on both of those events, not only with the survey results with the Bulson Center, but of course, this Magka Isa inaugural event. I look forward to attending future events. And you had a great turnout for our first-year event, and I imagine it will only grow. So congratulations. You know, the, the survey results, that meeting was eye-opening and sort of the disproportionate harm COVID had on the Filipino-American community, specifically with a lot of our nurses on the frontlines and a lot of the human suffering that occurred. So thank you for letting me be a part of that and as a lifelong learner. It was eye-opening, and it was very important for me to be there, and I learned a lot. Thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you for joining us, Mayor Singh Allen.
Thank you, and please extend our congratulations to everyone.
I will.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to our next item.
That next item will take us to Section 5, General Public Comment. So for any of our participants in the Zoom environment, now would be that opportunity to use the raise hand feature for general public comment. Members of the participating audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less if a large number of requests are received on a particular subject. City Council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter has been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the council or the city manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item. And mayor, vice mayor, and council members, there were no written public comments that were received prior to 4 o'clock today. We did receive an email later this afternoon that was sent direct to the City Council. It had a series of pictures as well, and I believe those speakers are here. I believe they're here in order to be brought into the speaking environment. But we have a couple of speakers that are signed up. I will pull up that speaker timer in the Zoom environment, and we will go from there.
Michael Harris, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, I'm assuming y'all can hear me.
We can. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and City Council. My name is Michael Harris, born and raised here in Sacramento County, proud graduate of Elk Grove Unified School District. And, well, I'm just thankful I didn't have to do the long-distance travel from Mac Road to Elk Grove High School, so they built a brand-new high school. I say for me, because they didn't want me out there. But it's a blessing to have the best of Elk Grove Unified School District and knowing that, you know, when you are given, you have to give back. And so, the idea that this month also is Ma'afa Awareness Month. Ma'afa is a Quechua Healy term that means terrible occurrence. And on the very top of Elk Grove, many of us don't have a good understanding of the, how the California Bear Flag vote began. how the California Bear Flag vote began in today's city of Elk Grove. Their flag revolt, first action was there, Murphy's Corral along the Casumnas River. And that action, let's just say 10 veterans of African descent participated. In fact, the flag bearer and helped construct the flag that we use today as our state flag, the California Republic. And the military report was written by the African founding father of California, who just happened to be the first diplomat of US in the United States of African descent. And just happened to build the first public school in California. However, you know, as we get to ethnic studies, probably we'll be able to get him into the curriculum at some point. So the notion of diversity, inclusion, and equity, you know, should actually have some cognition of what actually happened on the land of the city of Elk Grove. You know, so at some point, we're going to have to deal with and pull the Band-Aids off and deal with the genocide that occurred. Deal with that, the enslavement of people of African descent that occurred on up to the time where I went to high school. I mean, crosses were burned in people's, I mean, big 30-foot crosses by the Ku Klux Klan was burned in people's yards. And so as we go forward with diversity and inclusion, we got to be clear on, you know, mitigating some of the challenges that still exist today and then putting some things in place. So, you know, we don't have to revisit these things again. So on a positive note, I like what I see. I'm going to dive into the 100 and some odd page report from 2008, 2018, I believe, law firm did. But I encourage y'all to keep going.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for calling in. We appreciate you sharing your comments with us. We will go on to our next caller, please.
Cornelius Burke, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and members of the city council. This is Cornelius Burke with the North State Building Industry Association. We are the voice of the home building industry. I'm calling today just to support item 8.3, which deals with skip financing. We believe it's an innovative tool to help finance projects. And we're very delighted to support the item, which is going to be a great help to the city of Elk Grove to build more housing. Because Elk Grove is a great place to live, work, and play. And this proposal today will help in that regard. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Burke, for sharing your thoughts and comments. Have a great evening. Next caller, please.
I believe our next caller may have two callers on the same line. They're just sharing the same line, but they'll let us know as they pass the baton, if you will, as they're making their comments.
Kathleen Lee, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Jason, am I there?
You are.
Yes, you are. You're coming in loud and clear. Please proceed.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, council and Madam Mayor. Earlier today, I sent each of you a few pictures of the trauma we in Quail Ranch experienced during this recent downpour over the weekend. Hopefully you took a few minutes to look at them closely. Many of our streets, especially on the east side, bordering the Elliott Springs development, which is under construction, became impassable. That is, our neighbors were unable to leave their homes for a period of 12 hours. Our streets were flooded with mud. They were flooded with mud and debris from Elliott Springs. As water swells as high as six feet in some areas, the police, if needed, would have had very difficult time being able to access our homes and ambulances certainly would not have been able to get in here. Earlier that day, Quail Ranch stormwater drains were handling the incredible flow of water very well. The drains were being monitored by myself and a group of neighbors. The drains were open and operational and we had no issues whatsoever handling the large amount of rainwater. However, about 3:15, the clear rainwater turned into thick brown mud and debris began entering Quail Ranch from the Elliott property. This flow continued to increase in volume and consistency for the next seven to eight hours, making our streets impassable and creating distress to several of our senior and disabled residents. Our streets and sidewalks and vehicles were under muck. The muck rushed over Bond Road toward the entrance to Fallbrook Neighborhood. It rushed over four lanes of traffic on Bond. It went over the raised concrete median blocking the Fallbrook entrance. Cars on Bond Road became disabled due to the water and the muck and police had to finally close Bond Road to save others from similar fate. Once the storm was over and the water receded, mud and debris was strewn throughout our neighborhood, sidewalks and streets and lawns as high as six feet from the gutter. The morning after the storm, Elliott had water trucks, street sweepers, landscapers, and crews to clean up the muddy mess. Earth movers arrived and created berms from where the mud had created this havoc. As late as even this morning, Elliott was back out here repairing our streets where the muddy flow had created cracks in the streets. We are grateful for their prompt response and for their acceptance of the responsibility. You will recall just two weeks ago, I spoke to this council, warning them of this exact scenario, explaining how building homes, home pads as high as five feet higher than ours directly behind us would create flooding and draining issues for Quail Ranch. Those pictures I sent speak better than I can. Please look at those pictures. Jason, I'm going to go ahead and end there as my time is up and I'm going to pass the baton to Steve to finish up.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. We speak to you today asking that the city remove item 7.7 from tonight's consent calendar. That's the Elliott Springs environmental approval. And we ask you to please take another look into the engineering and drainage aspects of the project. We ask you to please agendize this item. Please have an independent engineering firm investigate the current plan and make sure and make recommendations to alleviate these concerns. We ask you to please have them also look into the location and flow of White House Creek as it is offered on the Elliott plan versus its natural flow path prior to the current plan and grading. Is this correct? Is Elliott's plan for White House Creek, moving the creek to the north, legal and safe? We need answers to these questions. The city and Elliott should welcome this review. There's no shame in verifying the calculations, elevations, and the creek placement. It's better to be safe now than to have to defend a lawsuit later. Had the stormwater from Elliott property been able to naturally flow through White House Creek, we believe much of the damage would have been avoided. White House Creek is currently dammed up on the Elliott property, forcing the water to flow into our community. The city and Elliott should welcome such this review. It's a prudent thing to do. No one wants to experience another one of these storms. Climate change is real and these kinds of storms may become more common in the future. Wood Rogers admits the first calculations were inaccurate in 2014 when they did the investigation into the Silverado project. Let's be sure the 2021 calculations are correct. And let's be sure the realignment of White House Creek does not inhibit the natural flow to drain the water out of Elliott Springs to the water basins in White House Creek and Camden Lake. We ask you please remove item 7.7 from tonight's consent calendar. Review these items and issues. Have independent experts take a fresh and innovative look at these issues and the potential solutions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Next caller, please.
Price Walker, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. It's almost apropos that I follow Steve and Kathy and for that, I probably want to just first apologize directly to them. But I want to just take a few minutes to explain the events of last Sunday and kind of what's taken place since Sunday in and around our project, Elliott Springs and Quail Ranch. And on behalf of Elliott Homes, I want to, first of all, apologize to anyone who was inconvenienced from the storm events of Sunday and that we have since Sunday and including today and will continue to clean up the area to the satisfaction of the neighbors, the very last neighbor, and the city. You have our commitment on that and I think we've shown that. I also want to thank city staff. We've been working with city staff continuously since Sunday on the project itself and some improvements inside the project as well as outside the project. But I just want to talk quickly a little bit about what happened. On Sunday, the area received record rain. We had six to seven inches of rain. It was a very unique event. And we were prepared. Our project was prepared for a strong storm, but we were not prepared for a storm of this magnitude. And quite frankly, no one was. If you watched the news that evening and Monday, there were issues all around the region. When the storm hit on Sunday afternoon, we were first notified of the situation. We immediately reached out to Tykert, our construction contractor, who got onto the site, started making repairs. And by 11 o'clock that evening, the water was down in the streets. Tykert was able to relieve the water pretty quickly Sunday night, once they got out there. We have, again, have been committed to cleaning up the neighborhood, house by house, yard by yard. We were out there today even. The city did issue a violation to us for discharge and we are working with the city to alleviate those and remedy those violations. That includes additional measures such as check dams, basins, and additional berms. We do think, once the project is complete and all of the ultimate drainage is in place, there will be a full drainage system that will convey and detain all required flows. Again, Elliott Homes is sorry for the unforeseen and unfortunate events last Sunday. And we are committed to continuing to be a good neighbor with the city and with the Quail Ranch residents. You know, Elliott is in Elk Grove for the long term. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next caller, please.
And I am looking over our list of attendees. I do not see any further raised hand functions being utilized in our Zoom environment. So it's going to conclude the public speakers under Section 5, Public Comment.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to our next item.
And that next item will be Section 6, General Administration Information.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Jason Berman is city manager. I'll start with a follow-up to what you just heard from the Lees and Mr. Walker about the storm that we had over the weekends. I want to give you a little bit of an after-action report on really the whole city, but just a few comments as well on that specific subdivision. So as we know, lots of rains, localized flooding in Elk Grove and the entire, throughout the entire Sacramento region. Elk Grove, our own rain gauge has recorded 5.12 inches of rainfall over a 24-hour period. National Weather Service actually reported more than that and over six inches over that weekend. Sunday's rainfall is being considered a record-breaking 250-year event. Many staff worked around the clock to care for the community during the weekend's severe weather. Public Works hotline fielded more than 560 calls for localized flooded, most of which occurred on that Sunday and really over a two- to three-hour period. Public Works crews worked nonstop responding to those calls, monitoring the drainage system, cleaning out clogged storm drains, relieving localized flooding. Most of the city's drainage system worked as they were designed to. The sheer amount of rainfall meant that most systems were operating at capacity. As the system continued to work, most roadways saw the waters recede. As already been mentioned, eastern portions of the Quail Ranch subdivision experienced turbid water runoff in streets, driveways, and front yards from the adjacent Elliott Springs subdivision currently under construction. Elliott Homes responded quickly to divert the flows and clean up any dirt and debris left in the neighborhood, as mentioned, as recently as today. And Elliott Homes has accepted their responsibility for that incident. A few other things to note, the 911 communication center answered nearly 70% more emergency and non-emergency calls on average Sunday. The majority of the calls were storm-related. The police department opened a department operations center to monitor traffic cameras, report flooding on major intersections. Officers also closed flooded roads proactively where necessary to avoid major traffic incidents. Police Department also connected with our homeless individuals throughout the community and offered to assist with relocating them to a safe place. Public Works has been working hard over the past couple of years to more proactively maintain our stormwater system to be prepared for these types of events. The hard work paid off by how well the system performed in conveying so much water over a short amount of time. Nevertheless, we learned lessons from the storm that will help us be better prepared for future events. We are developing more robust communication plans to provide important updates to residents in real time. Additionally, we are moving up our timeframe for storm preparedness earlier in the season as a storm happened much earlier than we see our typical winter storm season begin. Moving on to other matters, a few new items to report relating to redistricting in Elk Grove and the region and the state. California Citizens Redistricting Commission, which is a state effort, has released what they call visualizations that show hypothetical district-based boundaries for congressional, state senate, and assembly districts that will lead to the development of preliminary maps in the coming weeks. Residents can view and comment on these visualizations online at www.wedrawthelinesca.org. Sacramento County has also released their draft redistricting maps for comment. These can be viewed on their website at www.saccounty.net. The board of supervisors will review and discuss the first round of draft maps on November 2. City will begin its redistricting process in early 2022. And the city encouraged Elk Grove residents to stay informed and participate in these important, once-a-decade efforts that affect how our community is represented. I have to report on an incident that happened to one of our off-duty police officers. So Sahana Saar, who was a Cal OES employee, was involved in a horrific car crash and was ejected from her car near the Folsom Dam on January 19, 2019, a little while ago, prior to the COVID pandemic. Two off-duty law enforcement officers, one of which was our own police officer Jennifer McQ, happened to be passing by when the accident occurred. Finding no pulse, the officers performed CPR for more than 30 minutes until lifeline arrived, saving her life. Following a prolonged recovery in the subsequent COVID-19 pandemic, Sahana finally had the opportunity to meet and thank these two officers that saved her life. See the video of the emotional meeting, visit Cal OES or our EGPD's social media pages. It's time for Elk Grove's biennial survey. Postcards were mailed this week to randomly selected households to evaluate city services as part of the National Community Service Survey administered by the International City-City Management Association and the National Research Center. Residents who do not receive a survey postcard will have an opportunity to take the survey online later this year. Residents, or results are used to help shape local policy. For a complete report of recent past surveys, visit the city's website. Please join Elk Grove Police Department tomorrow night for trunk-or-treat from 5:00 to 8:00. All ages are welcome for this free event of the police department at 8400 Laguna Palms Way. Put on your favorite costume and bring your sweet tooth for an exciting evening. We're also inviting the community to join us for a grand opening celebration for the preserve at District 56 on Saturday, November 6, from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. Festivities will include a short ceremony, scavenger hunt, music, and refreshments. Event is free for all ages and will be held rain or shine. Details are available on the city's website. Finally, the 2021 Elk Grove COVID-19 Business Recovery Grant Program is still accepting applications through November 9. Eligible business types include home-based businesses, small businesses, and certain target businesses. Grant amounts range from $500 to $15,000. More information is available on the city's website at elkgrovecity.org/covidbizgrants. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. I do have a quick question as it relates to Elliott Homes. It was briefly mentioned, a violation of discharge. How are we holding Elliott Homes accountable? Is it that violation? How does that all work?
Good question, Madam Mayor. I think I will turn it over to our Development Services Director, Darren Wilson, to address that question.
Yes, thank you, Jason. On Monday, the 25th, the city issued a notice of violation in order to abate. Basically, put them on notice to correct the illicit discharge pursuant to Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 15.12. We are currently working and monitoring their efforts to clean the streets, the sidewalks, the landscape areas. They also will be placing a camera down the storm drain before cleaning to identify the areas to clean. And then they will back to truck those areas and get the storm drain clean and then do a post-cleaning camera effort to make sure they got it all. Moving forward for future storm events, they've, as Mr. Walker briefly stated, they're doing improvements onsite like in they're doing improvements onsite like increasing the height of berms. There, there's a connection to Bond Road that wasn't made. It was probably good it wasn't made because we may have had backflows in that system. So they're putting together a connection there with a valve that can be shut off in case of backflows. So they're basically increasing more storage on the site. The existing condition out there right now is, is in an interim condition for grading. So it can't be construed on what the drainage will ultimately be. So what they typically do in any development at this time of year is they use the site as their storage. So they've already hogged out the streets. Some of that streets acts as detention basins and then they berm and provide other type of interim basins and storage. It just happened to be the record rainfall caused an overspill and it was unexpected. I think the forecast originally was three to four inches and we got five to six. So that's a significant amount. To put it in perspective, a 250 year store event is not an event that occurs every 250 years. It's, it's a probability of 0.4% of occurring each, any given year. So it's a very small or small percentage or rare event. So. And the other anomaly is it happened in October, which is generally the beginning of the rainy season. We, what we see the first flush, which are smaller events. So a lot of things caught up to us, not only on Elliott Springs, but citywide. And I think the city overall drainage system performed well. So hopefully that answers your question, Mayor.
It does. Just to follow up on that, how are, how are we reassuring the neighbors? I believe you've had some meetings. Can you, you know, I know that we're doing our due diligence. So can you talk about some of the, how many families you've visited? And I want to, you know, sort of make sure that they feel reassured and supported, given the, not only the anomaly, but obviously this was at least the strongest rainstorm I've ever seen in my lifetime. But with climate change, we can perhaps expect more. So how are we reassuring our residents that it, that it's safe?
So from the city's perspective, we were asked to meet with one resident already. I'm sure Mr. Walker has met with more to go over that, but with that neighbor, we explained kind of the, the, the event that occurred on Sunday, the cleanup efforts, what's being done in the future for future storm events, as well as the ultimate drainage solution and system. So they haven't understand what's going to happen behind their house. So I, as a city representative, would be happy to meet with any resident out there to explain that. I have a good handle. I'm not the project designer, but I have a good handle of how the system will work.
And then last question, as it relates to future development, future sites, you know, lessons learned from this. You know, I guess it's more of a comment than a question to just, you know, as, as the city to monitor where those future projects are and, and what safety precautions need to take place at the forefront. Again, knowing that this, you know, this sort of torrential downpour that, that occurred on Sunday was unique. However, those unique circumstances can occur again.
They can and will be better prepared as far as our inspection staff to coordinate with the developers. And you know, rain does not discriminate on what day it falls on. So we need to be prepared on Saturdays and Sundays as well.
Thank you. And just thank you and other city staff. I did some independent tours throughout the city and then also joined you on a couple of the site visits. It was great to see where our bypasses, our creeks, that the systems were working, what they were designed to do. So, and just really applaud and commend our hardworking staff, our public works, our police department, even our fire department, who aren't our employees, but they are, this is all a partnership and we're all in this together. So just to thank you and shout out to everybody that got us through such a challenging time, but at the end of the day, kept everybody safe. So thank you. Councilmember soon?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to echo the sentiments and just thank Public Works for your on-call and response efforts. I think this is the, the most robust response that staffing that we've had since I've been on council. And so I just want to say, you know, thank you very much. I, I know personally, you know, it's like to, to staff those things. And so it's, it's much appreciated. And I know the residents appreciate having someone to talk to, even though sometimes you can't, you know, can't do much sometimes. But having someone to talk to and knowing the city's there, I think is very comforting. So thank you very much.
Seeing the other hands raised. Last question, Mr. Berman. I see Mr. Speeds here. Go ahead. I just want, if we can share that for the zoo, for people to sign up to get notices. If you can share what that is, it's on social media, just for those that are tuning in so that they can be part of the, the communication chain and, and receive live updates. And then we'll go to council member speeds.
Will do.
Councilmember speeds?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought the city manager had something more to say. Okay. So you can, this goes back to Darren again. Now I want to return to the Quail Ranch Elliott Springs conversation. So, Mr. Wilson, are you telling me that you feel confident in the design for the water and the drainage, such that you don't expect that this would happen again, had that design been fully implemented? It, it was, it was bad. I don't want to say bad timing. It was, well, extremely unfortunate timing, right? And I don't live there, so I don't want to minimize it at all. But what I'm asking you is, when you look at the drainage plan for the future build out, can you say with confidence that you believe that we will not have this, this problem again?
That is correct. Councilmember speeds, we, we reviewed the internal, you know, the drainage study that Wood Rogers put together. And the basically, the, the site is split into two sheds, a 12 acre shed that requires upsizing a pipe, which is going to be a CIP and Bond Road. And they're conditioned not to develop that piece until that upsizing has occurred. And then the, the rest of the shed goes into the detention basin through, via the storm drain pipes that will be built and then outfalls into the headwater of White House Creek, which is north of the Quail Ranch subdivision. So it is a complete independent system of Quail Ranch, once it's built. One thing I do, do want to note is that we did some FEMA mapping a few years ago, independent of Elliott Springs, this is before they obviously got started on development. And there are some hundred year flood plain elevations within the streets of, of Quail Ranch. It's mapped that way. That's the way it's modeled. So any street flooding that occurs in Quail Ranch will be due to the, their, their system, not the Elliott Springs system. So I want to make that clear. Sunday's event was a different, that was definitely caused by, you know, flows from Elliott Springs. But in the, you know, in the future, once the project's fully developed and operational, any flooding will be pretty much independent of one another.
Okay. And then when does Elliott Springs intend to continue grading? I mean, it's obviously saturated right now. I, I don't think they're going to be doing it for a couple of weeks. Is that it for the year? It's, are they buttoning down and waiting till spring or?
Well, that's the age old question. I'd have to, you know, talk to them. I, I think they still have some grading to do. But, you know, and, and the rainy season, it's always find those dry periods to be able to get some grading done. And based on the forecast, it looks like we're not have, going to have rain in the next, you know, seven days. That could change. But so the site could dry out. They can continue to work. And if they get rains, they just have to work through the rain events. But the, and storm drain improvements won't be fully installed until spring of next year. That was part of the schedule and, you know, part of it is they, they do, are limited on their grading and their operate, or the work they can do during the rainy season. So.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I can share some information about the zoo.
Yes, please.
Like, so we do have a page up on our website. A short URL for that is elkgrovecity.org/zoo. And if you indulge me, I can share my screen really quickly and show you what we have on there. So interested parties, residents can go to the city's website again at elkgrovecity.org/zoo. You can see a description of the project over to the right where it says, sign up for updates. You can click on the zoo box here. And then as we update the website, we provide information that will get an automatic update in their email box. So they can stay abreast of opportunities for public comment and workshops and information as we move through the process. There's pictures here, kind of a next steps process is what's, what's coming up. We also have frequently asked questions on the websites. We have all kinds of information about this process that we're undertaking with the zoo. So I'd certainly encourage all of our residents to go and take a look and sign up for those updates.
All right. Thank you. I don't see any other hands raised from council. So we'll move on to our next item.
And Mayor Vice Mayor and council members, I did want to take a moment. We've been informed by our team at Metro that our feed that goes online has dropped the visual, which unfortunately, and for all the folks for what city manager Berman was referring to, that's, you can navigate to the city's webpage. So three W's, elkgrovecity.org and backslash zoo will get you to that, the zoo details. And we got lots of pointers that go there. But as we have a few items that have PowerPoints, what our team is asking us is that if we could take a 10 to 15 minute break, it would give them an opportunity to reboot the system. What that does is gives them this live environment for us to get the systems back up and running. We apologize for the inconvenience, but I think it's just kind of a matter that we've had. If anyone's been taking notes at home, we do have, our Zoom environment has been recording. So we do have actually the meeting that's been going to date. This is just the kind of our system that we're used to, which is the one that pushes out for live webcasts that goes through our city website. But if we can just take a short break, it'll give them an opportunity to troubleshoot this and do a hard reboot. And we don't think it'll take more than 10 to 15 minutes.
All right. Why don't we say we come back at 7:15? That should give you enough time.
Appreciate that. So we appreciate the time and we will look into it and see if we can get our, all of our systems back up and running.
Thank you. All right. It is 7:15. Are we good to go?
And we are good to go. And I'd just like to extend apologies out to our viewing public, to council and staff and all of our participants in the Zoom environment for having to put on pause for a little bit. Sometimes there are technological issues. It takes a process of constant vigilance. Even then, sometimes systems go down, but it's always nice to have some clever folks that can help get us back online. We are back in our operational mode that we're used to. And without further ado, Mayor, I can continue on to our next section.
Yes, please.
And that'll be section seven, the consent calendar items. And for our participants in the Zoom environment, this would be your opportunity in order to sign up for general public or for public comment on the consent calendar items. And just to review with Mayor Vice Mayor and council members, there were no written comments that were received prior to the meeting on the consent calendar.
Okay. I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity.
I'm reviewing over the list of attendees and I do not see any of the raised hand functions being utilized. So that is going to conclude the public comment opportunity on section seven, the consent calendar items.
All right. I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. And look for a motion.
Q, move consent.
Speeds second.
Sorry, I was trying to unmute my computer. It took forever.
So we have a motion in a second.
I will proceed to that roll call vote for the consent calendar items, starting with councilmember speeds.
Hi.
Councilmember Hume.
Hi.
Councilmember Soon.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Winn.
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
The consent calendar items of section seven will pass 5-0.
All right. So we'll move on to our next item.
And the next item will take us into section eight, our public hearings, starting with item 8.1, which is a public hearing to consider a resolution adopting updated facility rental fees for the Old Town Plaza.
Good evening, council. Lana Yoshimura, Community Event Center Manager. Are you able to hear me okay?
You're coming in loud and clear. And then if you want to share screen, you can please proceed.
Are you, Jason, are you able to see that?
I have visual. If you just want to move into the slideshow mode, you'll be good to go.
Okay.
Lana Yoshimura. I'm sorry. Lana, just right now, you're still in the kind of design mode. If you want to hit the slideshow mode, it just fills the full screen. So.
Okay. Hang on one second.
Slideshow will be one of the menu options in the upper menu midway between animations and review.
Hang on one second. Interesting, because my screen is showing that, but let me see. Nope, it's still coming up as a design.
I think this is the one where you have display settings. Do you have that option in the middle? And I think there's, you can click on that and that's the one.
How about now? Okay, perfect. Appreciate that. Good evening. I wanted to talk to you this evening about Old Town Plaza, starting with a little bit of the background of the facility. The city acquired Old Town Plaza in 2012. It is located at 9645 Railroad Street in Old Town. In 2017, the council approved zoning changes as well as a design concept for Old Town Plaza. We did do some renovation at that time, including putting in a restroom. In August 2019, the city council adopted facility rental fees for Old Town Plaza. This was along with district rental, with rental fees for District 56. We started a construction on Old Town Plaza to complete the renovations for it in June 2020 and then completed it and did the grand opening in July 21st, 2021. So that is some background information on the space. These are the current fees that were adopted in August 20, on August 28th, 2019. As you can see, like it does have a Laguna Ridge rate. At that time, the facility was basically a large asphalted lot along with a bathroom with two single gender stall. Old Town Plaza today has been completely revitalized. I think it's a beautiful facility. It's about 4,000, 47,000 square feet. We installed a pavilion, which is about 9,300 square feet, which has fans and lighting. Installed several picnic tables, benches, included electrical outlets, increased the amount of amenities for trash cans and drinking fountains. This is Old Town Plaza today. So as you can see, very different from the asphalted lot that it was prior to the renovation. So in looking at that and the upgrades that we have made to the site, we are looking to adjust facility rental fees for it. I will say that the plaza is a unique space. It's not a building. It's not a picnic shelter. It's not an open space. It is not an amphitheater. So when we went looking for fee comparisons, it was a quite exhaustive and interesting search. So I wanted to share with you some of the things that we compared this space to. So this is Mickey Grove Park, the Delta Shelter in Lodi. It's part of their zoo facility. It's a 3,000 square foot pavilion. The space comes with picnic tables and a stage. The rental fee is $550 a day. It's only available between the park's opening hour. We looked at Weber Point, which is in Stockton. This is a covered amphitheater with grass seating. If you are charging an admission fee, rental of this facility is $4,200 per day. That works out to 525 per hour. If you are not charging any admission, they charge you $3,000 for the eight hours, which breaks down to 375 per hour. We also looked at Strauss Island at Elk Grove Park, which is pretty familiar to all of us. That is a stage area with grass seating, a gazebo and a chair, changing area behind the stage. That is $125 per hour. We also compared it to our existing facilities at District 56. The Avenue of the Arts, as you know, is a paved open area with numbered vendor medallions, a dancing fountain and porch seating. For peak pricing, Friday through Sunday, it works out to 200 to $245 per hour, depending on what tier rate you are at. For, sorry. For off-peak pricing, Monday through Thursday, it works out to 160 to $190 per hour, depending on what tier rate you are at. The Veterans Grove at District 56, as you know, this is an open grass area with picnic tables and barbecue grills. It does not have a sheltered covering. The Veterans Grove at District fifty six, as you know, this is an open grass area with picnic tables and barbecue grills. It does not have a sheltered covering. Because it is an open area with limited amenities for peak rental, we charge a hundred and ten to a hundred and four dollars per day. For off peak, we charge eighty five to a hundred and twenty five dollars per day. In looking at what the pavilion structure is like, I also pulled tent rentals because it's basically a covered structure. When you look at pavilion. If you rented a four thousand square foot tent, it'd be two thousand eight hundred dollars. That includes the installation. If you were looking at a smaller tent without installation, it's about seventeen hundred dollars. So we wanted to compare it against the pavilion, which we see as the major amenity to at the site. Looking at the proposed fees. Basically, we have the current Old Town Plaza fees and the recommended Old Town Plaza fees. As you can see, we're recommending deleting the Laguna Ridge resident discounted fee. We this facility will be paid for out of the general fund and for that reason, we would eliminate the Laguna Ridge discount. We would combine nonprofits as one category along with Outgrow Residence. For peak hours of rental, we would do a twelve hour minimum rental for peak times between Friday and Sunday would work out to. Eighteen hundred dollars, which is a hundred and fifty dollars per hour. And if you needed more than twelve hours of time, we would charge you the one fifty. If it was off peak, so Monday through Thursday, it would be a hundred and twenty five dollars per hour. With a three hour minimum is what we would ask. If you are a non Outgrow resident, another organization or a commercial business. For peak pricing, a twelve hour minimum rental would be one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars, which works out to one sixty five per hour. Off peak would be one forty per hour. We also are recommending including an optional staffing cost. So with rental of this facility, what we will do is provide access to the facility. That means our staff will go out, we'll open the restrooms, we'll unlock dumpsters, we'll make sure electrical is. Functioning as well as remove the ballards that prevent cars from driving on the site. If you would like staff to stay at the site throughout your event to service the restrooms, to pick up trash, to do troubleshooting at the site. It would be seventy dollars per hour. That seventy dollars is the fully burden rate for a facility or event technician. So one of our city staff. To be up there at an hourly rate. I. That is the end of my presentation. I am happy to take any questions that you might have.
Still on mute there. Thank you, Miz Yoshimura. Let's see, I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Why the twelve hour minimum? I don't really see that on the comparison with other sites.
So the twelve hour minimum is basically similar to the concept that we have at district fifty six. Because of the staffing model, we would do larger events on the weekends is what we perceive happening. The twelve hours would include the setup, the event and the cleanup. The difficult thing in doing an hourly wait on the weekends is that if we had two events back to back, we would have to go out and service the facility, including cleaning the restrooms, taking out the trash. And we just don't have the staffing capacity to do that at this time. And we also would see this as being like one of those bigger events, a farmer's market, a large festival that would want those. That twelve hour timeframe. We do this at the center at district fifty six have found great success with it. We're carrying that over into Old Town Plaza.
So you haven't really encountered too many that want it for say six hours.
Not especially. What we find, especially at the center mayor is that. For a wedding, a large party, they want to have several hours to set up. They want many hours for their event and then they want at least one or two hours to clean up. So that twelve hour minimum rental is never a problem for them in terms of like trying to get everything arranged, hosting your event as well as cleanup. So we, we see that same concept moving to Old Town Plaza.
The last question is, there's no requirement to have security?
So we would basically require security as well. We already have a security fee as part of our facility rental program. It's thirty dollars an hour. If something involved alcohol, that is a requirement that you have security. And then larger events over three hundred people, we would have one security guard. It's not part of the overall Old Town Plaza rates that we're bringing to you because it's already part of our staffing fees.
Got it, got it. Okay. But council colleagues, any questions? I can go down the list. Councilor speeds.
No questions. Thank you.
Council member him.
Nice work, Lana. Nothing to argue with.
Councilor soon.
Yeah, thank you very much, Lana. No questions.
Vice Mayor when.
No questions.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion then.
Before we go too much further, Mayor, if we can just.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Some of the procedural steps. Yeah.
Yes. Public comment opportunity, please.
And what I'd ask for staff is if you can. Unshare your screen. That will allow us the opportunity, but and then I can go through and see who's.
There we go.
Who's on our attendee list. So again, for attendee members in the zoom environment, this is item eight point one, when you have an opportunity for public comment. And Mayor Vice Mayor and council members, there were no written comments that were submitted prior to the council meeting in regards to item eight point one as I review the participant list. I do not see any raised hand functions. And so that's going to conclude the public comment for our public hearing here for item eight point one.
Thank you and thank you for that. I'll go ahead and declare that the public hearing is closed. And now look for a motion.
Move to adopt the resolution. Second.
Have a motion in a second.
And with the motion in the second, I will start that roll call vote with council member speeds.
Hi.
Councilman Jim.
Hi.
Council member soon.
Hi.
Vice Mayor when.
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
The resolution of item eight point one will pass five oh.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Miz Yoshimura. Next item, please.
It will take us on to item eight point two, which is a public hearing to consider a capital improvement program design review minor for the Elk Grove Police Department Site Improvements Project.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Sarah Kurtz Gessner, planning. The project before you tonight is the Elk Grove Police Department Site Improvement Project. It consists of a capital improvement program design review. Minor for facade and site improvements. At the city's police department buildings, including the installation of. A new canopy, a new permanent storage container, CMU block wall and new metal fencing as well as new wrought iron fencing. The planning commission reviewed the application on October seventh. Only the project applicant spoke during public comments. Verbal comments were not made by any community members. During deliberations, Chair Murphy stated that he preferred option two, which I will discuss later. As it provides more public parking than option one. Additionally, Chair Murphy suggested that the landscape. That there be additional landscape screening added in front of the proposed metal fencing along Studio Court. The commission voted four zero to recommend city council approval of the project. Chair Murphy's recommendations were not included in that adopted motion. The project site is located at the southwest corner of Laguna Palms Way and Studio Court. The site is currently developed with the Elk Grove Police Department and council chambers. The proposed improvements to Studio Court include the installation of a new. Eight foot metal security fence and vehicle tape. With corrugated metal panels shown in blue. As well as a new ten foot, ten and a half foot CMU block wall and metal metal canopy to provide for secured secured exterior storage. A new chain link fence. As well as. A two hundred square foot shipping container, which would be located in the rear of the building. This would be relocated from the city's existing police department facilities on Iron Rock Way. The the location is not visible to the public from the street. Here's the rendering of the proposed fencing. The project also proposes perimeter fencing along the existing police department buildings located at eighty four hundred and eighty three eighty Laguna Palms Way. The new fencing will expand the police department secured parking area. The new wrought iron fencing will be powder coated black to match the existing parking area. As mentioned earlier, the project includes two fencing layout options for the proposed fencing. On the east side of the eighty four hundred building. Option one provides security fencing for the building as well as additional secured parking while option two only provides building security. The final layout would be determined by city council at a later council meeting. Once costs are determined. There would be sufficient parking spaces for the public under both options. The project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to state CEQA guidelines one five three oh three. And the planning commission recommended approval of the project. I'm available for questions as well as John Griffin and Stephanie Carlson from the Public Works Department. This concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you for your presentation. I will declare the public hearing is now open and open the public comment opportunity.
And I just request of staff, if you can unshare your screen. And then for our attending members in the zoom environment, this would be the opportunity to speak on item eight point two. Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members, there were no written comments received prior to the meeting on item eight point two as I review our participant list in the zoom environment. I am not seeing any raised hand functions being utilized. That will conclude public comment for item eight point two.
All right, thank you. I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed. And open it up for any council questions. We'll start. With council member him.
Thank you, Mayor. Sarah, I'm sorry. I couldn't figure it out in the staff report and then I didn't. See it in your slide presentation there either. Can you explain or maybe you have a graphic that shows. Where on the studio court elevation, the the solid fencing would be? It says east view, but I couldn't figure out how that relates to the current complex. Or the building that has been purchased.
Let me share my screen again. So your question is regarding the the metal fencing on the.
That that shot there, where am I looking there?
So that is if you head down Studio Court. This would be in front of the existing building along the street. So immediately south of the. The most southern existing driveway at the eighty four hundred building, if that makes sense. So if I go back to this site, let me see. This site plan. The metal fencing would be located. In this area.
Okay, so it would it would be still the wrought iron fencing up adjacent to the existing eighty four hundred building.
That's correct. What is shown in yellow here would be wrought iron fencing.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Council members these.
I don't have questions. Thank you.
Council member soon.
No questions. Thank you.
Vice Mayor when.
No questions.
All right, looking for a motion then.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
With a motion in a second for the resolution of item eight point two, I will start the roll call vote with council member speeds.
Hi.
Council member him.
Hi.
Council member soon.
Hi.
Vice Mayor when.
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
Resolution of item eight point two passes five oh.
All right, next item, please.
Our next item is eight point three, which is a public hearing to consider resolution authorizing the use of the statewide community infrastructure program or skip. Community facilities district and authorizing various actions to enact that.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and members of the city council. Can you see my screen here?
Let me see your name right now.
Currently, we can't, but let me see.
Is that better?
You had the you want to use the function in zoom of share screen, which should be. Down in your main menu bar. Down where you can activate where you're mute and start video. There will be a series of icons and one of them is green and says share screen.
Right.
Click on that and then select that program that you wish to share and that should pull up on the that should. Take over our screens, basically. You're on route. It's it's happening.
It's happening. Great. Okay. Okay, so you see that?
Indeed, and you're everything. We have audio. We have visual. Please proceed.
Yeah, so my name is Kara Taylor Seaman. I'm a finance analyst here at the city. And I'm presenting the public hearing tonight related to the use of a new program for community facility districts here in the city to support development. A little background, the city implemented the land secured financing policy back in two thousand and thirteen. It's been amended twice, most recently in two thousand and nineteen. The policy provides guidance for the formation and best practices of the city's special finance districts. And there is specific language related to conduit financing or where we partner with another outside agency. And there are currently two programs that provide those conduit program financing programs. One is called skip and that stands for statewide community infrastructure program. The other one is called bold, which is the bond opportunities for land development. I'll get into specifics on each of those here in just a minute. So first of all, these conduit financing programs, they provide benefits to both property owners and the city. Specific to property owners, the programs provide them with several opportunities. The first is that they can leverage tax exempt financing on a long term basis. For smaller projects specifically, they can obtain financing in a pooled program where those costs are spread across all projects in the pool. And then that results in a situation where each project can keep their costs down through some economies of scale. And then finally, these are financed through tax assessments to the property owners and those can be paid off early if if the property owner chooses. The benefits to the city are few I've listed here is this is a financing tool incentive. For small developments, projects that are not included in city CFDs. And again, those pool financing is probably at a lower cost to the developer than what they could achieve through city led financing. The city is not liable for any of the debt service or any of the financing costs. And then the conduit financing partners, they do all of the administration. They do all the bond issuances. They do all of the. Legal work. They do all the heavy lifting and administration for the programs. So the two programs that the city partners with, the first is that skip program, which is the statewide community infrastructure program. It does provide tax assessments on property owners to fund the debt service. This is an assessment district. It's administered by the California statewide community. Communities Development Authority or CSCDA. The city has partnered with the skip program since two thousand and four. We have been involved in thirteen bond financings. Eighteen relatively small development projects for a combined total of twenty six point five million dollars in financing. The second program is the bold program. This again is our tax assessments for to property owners. This is a community facilities district. Which is different than an assessment district. It's administered by the California Municipal Finance Authority or CMFA. We have partnered with them. This is much newer, just since two thousand and nineteen. We've had two bond financings. The third one is going through in the next couple of months, probably in December. So currently with those two bond financings, there are two development projects for a combined total of about four point three million dollars in financing. So the public hearing tonight is a proposal to expand this the skip option. That would allow, in addition to assessment districts, they could also offer the community facilities district or CFD. The CSCDA will continue to issue the bonds and they will administer the program. So developers, this gives them a greater range of costs of options to fund their current programs. They can. They just have a broader range to to fund development impact fees and capital facilities or capital improvements, excuse me. So the with the approval of the resolution. Developers would be able to utilize the conduit financing from either the skip assessment district or the CFD program for their qualified projects. The resolution would also authorize CF CDA to accept applications, issue the bonds, levy the properties and administer. Both programs, the assessment districts and the CFD. So thank you for your consideration and your time tonight. I am available to answer any questions.
All right, thank you for that presentation. I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open the public comment opportunity. I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open the public comment opportunity.
For our Zoom meeting participants, this would be the opportunity to address public comments for item eight point three. And Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council members, there were no written comments that were received prior to the meeting in relation to item eight point three. As I look over our list of participants in the Zoom environment, I am not seeing any of the raised hand features being utilized. So that will conclude the public comment for item eight point three.
All right. Thank you. I will go and close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed. And open it up for any council comments. Let's see, we'll start with Councilmember these.
I don't have questions. Thank you.
Councilmember soon. I thought I saw your hand raised.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I see the the need for this in terms of bright and greater flexibility to continue to address the housing supply shortage. So I'm happy to move the item. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion. Any other questions, comments? Let's see, we'll go to Councilmember Hume.
Not a question. I was just prepared to second the motion and I agree that it's just another arrow in the quiver to be able to provide creative financing.
All right, Vice Mayor when? Did you have anything to add?
I was just gonna second it, but Councilmember Hume beat me to it.
All right, we have a motion in a second.
And with that, I will commence with the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Spies.
Hi.
Councilmember him.
Hi.
Councilmember soon.
Hi.
Vice Mayor when?
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
Resolution of item eight point three will pass five oh.
All right. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next will take us to item eight point four, which is actually three public hearings to consider the fifty eighth annexation to Community Facilities District two thousand and three dash two for police services. The seventy third annexation to Community Facilities District two thousand and six dash one for maintenance services and the forty seventh annexation to stormwater drainage fees zone two.
Jason, can you hear can you hear me and see my screen?
Indeed, we have audio. We have visual. Please proceed.
Okay, great. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Renee Atar, the other finance analyst for the city. I'm here this evening with the presentation for proposed annexations into the city's special tax district. The city maintains eight special tax districts which provide funding for infrastructure or for services such as for police maintenance, street maintenance, street lighting and stormwater drainage. Annexations into the appropriate districts are typically part of a new development project's approval process. The requirements are specific for each project and vary according to the geographic location and building use. The special track taxes are subject to annual rate adjustments. On September eighth, twenty twenty one, the city council adopted resolutions of intent to annex the parcels for the Laguna Main Street Apartments project and the Waterman Brinkman Logistics Center project into special tax districts and to establish tonight's public hearings. The projects are being proposed for annexation into the following various special tax districts. CFD two thousand and three dash two for police and public safety services. CFD two thousand and six dash one for maintenance services throughout the city. And stormwater drainage fees zone two for stormwater drainage and runoff maintenance services. This is the fifty eighth annexation into CFD two thousand and three dash two, the seventy third annexation and to CFD two thousand and six dash one and the forty seventh annexation into stormwater drainage fee zone two. And all of these assessments will be levied in perpetuity. More specifically about the projects, the first one Laguna Main Street Apartments. The project consists of one hundred and forty eight multifamily unit located southeast of Laguna Boulevard and I five in the Laguna West area. And the second project is Waterman Brinkman Logistics Center, which consists of approximately thirty non residential acres located southwest of Elk Grove Boulevard and Waterman Road. That concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm available for any questions.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. I will declare the public hearing for CFD two zero zero three dash two annex fifty eight now open and open the public comment opportunity.
And for our members of the audience, this is the opportunity for public comment during item eight point four. This is actually three public hearings. They're all very interrelated. But it for anyone that wishes to address these items, it would be the opportunity under eight point four to use that raise hand feature. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council members, you'll hear a familiar story, which is no written comments received for these public hearings for item eight point four. And that will conclude the public comment for this first of our annexations for CFD two thousand and three dash two.
All right, I'll declare the public hearing for CFD two zero zero three dash two annex fifty eight closed. And A one motion number one.
Motion A one. Second.
With the motion, a second for the resolution of A one, I will start the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Spies.
Hi.
Councilmember him. Councilmember, try one more time. Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Stephanie's situation is contagious, apparently. I.
And happen with the mute unmute buttons and all that kind of good stuff. Keep moving on to Councilmember soon.
Hi.
Vice Mayor when?
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
Resolution of A one passes five oh.
All right, may I request the results of the ballot tabulation?
Indeed, of one hundred and forty eight possible votes, one hundred and forty eight affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. The measure passes with more than two thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. Resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Thank you. Motion A two, please.
I would move motion A two.
Second.
With a motion and a second for the resolution of A two, I'll start the roll call vote with Councilmember Spies.
Hi.
Councilmember him.
Hi.
Councilmember soon.
Hi.
Vice Mayor when?
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
Resolution of A two will pass five oh.
All right, motion A three.
Madam Mayor, introducing wave by full reading by substitution of title only, an ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax in territory annexed to because the Community Facilities District number two zero zero three dash two, police services annexation number fifty eight and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, section three point one eight point zero one zero.
Thank you.
With a motion and a second for the ordinance of motion A three, I will start the roll call vote with the motioner, Councilmember Spies.
Hi.
Councilmember him.
Hi.
Councilmember soon.
Hi.
Vice Mayor when?
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
Ordinance of A three will pass five oh.
All right, we're on to the second public hearing, CFD two zero zero six dash one annex seventy three. I will declare the public hearing for CFD two zero zero six dash one annex seventy three now open and open the public comment opportunity.
And again, for our participants in the Zoom environment, this would be the opportunity for public comment under eight point four for CFD two thousand and six dash one annex seventy three. No written comments were received in regards to this item. I do not see the raised hand function being utilized by any of our participants in the attendee list. That'll conclude public comment for CFD two thousand and six dash one annex seventy three.
All right, I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for CFD two zero zero six dash one annex seventy three now closed. Looking for a motion one.
The resolution.
Okay.
Second.
With a motion, a second for the resolution of motion B one, I will start the roll call vote with Councilmember Spies.
Hi.
Councilmember him.
Hi.
Councilmember soon.
Hi.
Vice Mayor when?
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
Resolution of motion B one will pass five oh.
All right, may I request the results of the ballot tabulation?
Of one hundred and seventy eight possible votes, one hundred and seventy eight affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. The measure passes with more than two thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. A resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Thank you. Now we're on to motion B two.
Now motion B two.
Second.
The motion and a second for the resolution of B two, the roll call vote will commence with Councilmember Spies.
Hi.
Councilmember him.
Hi.
Councilmember soon.
Hi.
Vice Mayor when?
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
Resolution of motion B two passes five oh.
All right, on to motion B three.
Motion B three, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax and territory annexed to Community Facilities District number two thousand and six dash one Maintenance Services Annexation number seventy three and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, section three point one nine point zero one zero.
Second.
With a motion and a second for the ordinance of motion B three, I will start the roll call vote with Councilmember Spies.
Hi.
Councilmember him.
Hi.
Councilmember soon.
Hi.
Vice Mayor when?
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
Ordinance of motion B three passes five oh.
All right, we are on to our third public hearing for SWDF zone two annex forty seven. I will declare the public hearing for SWDF two annex forty seven now open and open the public comment opportunity.
And for our attendees in the Zoom audience, now would be the opportunity to provide public comment on item eight point four for SWDF two annex forty seven. Mayor, no update. There's no written comments that were received in relation to this third public hearings under item eight point four. And none of our participants are utilizing that raised hand function. That'll conclude public comment for annex forty seven.
Thank you. I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing for SWDF two annex forty seven is now closed. And request the clerk for the results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest of one hundred and seventy eight possible votes weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for each property. One hundred and seventy eight affirmative votes were returned. The ballots approved the proposed assessments and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcels identified in the ballots. A resolution determining to levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Move motion C to adopt that resolution.
Second.
And with a motion and a second, I will proceed to the roll call vote for motion, the resolution of motion C, starting with Councilmember Spies.
Hi.
Councilmember him.
Hi.
Councilmember soon.
Hi.
Vice Mayor when?
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
And that resolution of motion C will pass five oh.
All right, excellent. Onto our next item, please.
I'll take us to section nine, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item nine point one, which is to receive the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty 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 one budget update report and consider a resolution amending the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget.
Mr. Clerks, yeah, Mr. Lindgren, can you see a share screen yet?
Not as of yet.
All right. We will attempt. We will attempt again.
You're in process. Yep, you're good. We have, we have audio, we have visuals. Please, please proceed.
Greetings, Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor when and fellow city council members. My name is Shane Orion, budget manager for the city of Elk Grove, and I'm here today to present an update on the financial condition of the city at the end of fiscal year twenty 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 one. On that ended on June thirtieth of this year. So quick overview of the agenda before you. We'll begin with reviewing the budget estimates, activity and fund balance of the general fund at the end of FY twenty twenty one, followed by a brief briefly presenting revenue info on other major funds. And then moving on with presenting staff recommended budget amendments to the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two current year budget and then concluding with a a presentation of two public outreach videos on the city's budget. So I'm going to go ahead and get rolling on the general fund. So at the end of the fiscal year twenty twenty one, general fund revenues fell short of year estimates by over one point three million dollars. The year and estimate shown here were also published in the current year budget publication. So focusing on the most significant variances and revenue sources that may have been vulnerable to the pandemic or at least vulnerable to the pandemic in theory. The city has received nearly thirty five million dollars in sales tax revenues for the prior fiscal year, which is nearly four million dollars more than estimated. According to the city's sales tax consultants, sales tax revenues outperformed projections during the the spring of twenty twenty one. So significant growth was experienced this past spring when compared to the spring of twenty twenty, the prior year. This is not surprising, given that the shelter in place orders during the spring of twenty twenty were happening when many businesses were temporarily closed or had capacity restrictions. The two most notable sectors that outpaced projections for FY twenty one were new motor vehicle dealerships, given that dealerships were open for the most part during the pandemic. And it's the city's largest business type as well. So business and industry, general consumer goods as well, outpaced projections, restaurants actually outpaced projections as well and state and county pools, which includes online, online sales. And looking at utility users tax, UT revenues was nearly a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars less than estimated estimated, according to the city's UT consultant. Impacts from the pandemic remain fluid and volatile based on trends among the electric, natural gas and cable industries. Some utilities had suspended service disconnections due to nonpayment for both residential and commercial customers until later in twenty twenty one. This provision could have affected UT revenues. However, as links delinquency revenue is recovered by the utilities in the future, the city should expect some level of recovery. Transient occupancy tax or TOT revenue received for the prior fiscal year fiscal year was nearly thirty two thousand dollars less than less than estimated, which which is percentage wise, a lot less than than what it could have been. The shortage is likely due to continuing effects of the pandemic on the lodging industry. However, according to some recent reports received from the city's TOT consultants, TOT revenue exceeded expectations for May and June. So hopefully this positive trend continues into the current fiscal year. And then staff anticipated at least five and a half million dollars of the six million dollars of reimbursement revenue associated with the Great Place Delivered program would be received in FY twenty one. Given the large number of COVID related claims being processed by the state, the city did did not receive the funds in the prior fiscal year. However, the city has received approximately five million dollars so far this fiscal year and staff anticipated that the remainder will be received pretty soon this fiscal year. So revenues received at year end from all the other sources combined, including property taxes, franchise fees, aggregately exceeded their estimates. So now looking at the spending side of the general fund. So at the end of the prior fiscal year, the city expended ninety nine percent of estimated expenditures in the general fund of nearly eighty seven million dollars, which is shown in the table before you, resulting in nearly one point three million dollars of savings. The primary sources of savings when compared to the year and estimates were in operations. The divisions with the most operation savings were police information technology, police administration as well, due to some delayed projects and community events due to COVID nineteen restrictions on gatherings last year. So then before you is is the bottom line, right? This is the breakdown of the general fund balance, balance reserves. So the total fund balance at the bottom is approximately fourteen thousand dollars less than the projection presented in in the FY twenty two budget book, the publication. So consider considering that if all of the revenue for the Great Place Delivered program had been received in FY twenty one rather than in FY twenty two, the general fund reserve balance on June thirtieth would be a would be approximately six million, five to six million dollars greater than the amount presented above. So so considering that really being that close to the projection that's presented in the in the budget publication is is a very, very positive piece of news because it could have been a lot more than that. So now moving on and focusing briefly on the status of other major funds among transportation funds such as gas tax SB one, measure A, the actual revenues received and the resulting fund balances in FY twenty one were close to or exceeded year and estimates alleviating concerns of any lingering impacts from the pandemic on on those those transportation funds. For Development Services Fund, which is which is your your fund that collects revenues for planning, building permits and and processes development projects. When comparing actuals to estimates, revenues came in higher, spending was When comparing actuals to estimates, revenues came in, uh, higher, spending was very close, and hence the fund balance, uh, exceeded the estimates as well. Uh, unfortunately, revenue activity for the Laguna Ridge Parks Fee Funds trended, uh, uh, lower than projected for the majority of FY twenty one, uh, most severely in the spring months. Shortfall is likely due to volatility, uh, in timing of residential development projects in Laguna Ridge, so, so isolated to that area. It's not, not a citywide concern. This was not the case for major citywide impact fee funds such as the Affordable Housing Fund or roadway fee program, or the police and library capital facilities fees, which, which are hopefully going to be leveraged for a couple of major projects coming up. So, uh, I'm going to move on now to looking at some proposed budget amendments for the current year that are going to be utilized in this agenda item. Staff proposes, uh, the council authorized a city manager to transfer the Great Plates Reimbursement Revenue that we thought we were going to get last year. Uh, and then once received this year to be able to transfer that from the general fund to the general capital reserve fund to contribute funding toward council priority projects. Um, the original intent of the Aquatic Center Capital Maintenance Account was to utilize any unspent annual budget toward potential unforeseen future replacement needs. Hence, uh, staff recommends increasing the Aquatic Center budget by approximately four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is the, which is the total, uh, unspent amount in the capital maintenance budget since the year the Aquatic Center opened. Staff recommends increasing the debt service expenditure budget in the street lighting maintenance district, so district zone two fund by ninety one thousand dollars to pay off its share of the interfund loan balance of approximately a hundred and thirty four thousand dollars associated with the LED street light replacement project from, from years ago. Uh, and to maintain a positive fund balance in the Laguna Ridge Parks Fee Fund, which is, which is a fund I just talked about recently that, that has shortages in revenue. Staff recommends debt service contribution for the District Fifty Six Nature Preserve. Instead, instead come from the Laguna Ridge C F D, rather, which is an eligible funding source for this debt service on a temporary basis. And then finally, staff recommends, uh, reducing the artwork budget in the Laguna Ridge supplemental parks facilities fee fund by approximately a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars since it was unnecessarily re-appropriated in FY twenty two. So that concludes our amendments presented to you tonight, and actually I would now like to, uh, before I turn it over to watch a couple of videos, want to talk about these videos first just a second. We got two videos to present tonight. Uh, the first video is, is more of a traditional effort that, uh, the budget division partners up with the Public Affairs Division and also with the Capital Improvement Program Division, the graphics design team, uh, to highlight efforts in, in a biennial, uh, fiscal year. So every two years, there's an effort to create a video that outreaches on the major highlights of a biennial budget. So we adopted a, a, a two-year, uh, but a plan in June, and so the first video is looking at some things happening around this time. The second video is the newest addition to the Do You Know Your City series? So this is, this is a, a newer effort. Uh, we, we've never had a budget video that focuses really on general education of the public on how just this, the overview of how funding and budgets and spending work in the city. So partnering up with the Public Affairs Division, again, uh, in the budget division to put this together with the graphic design teams, we're really proud of both, both efforts. And, uh, so now I'd like to turn it over to our city clerk, Jason Lingering, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to stop sharing so that he can, he can take over for a little bit.
Excellent. I was just gonna ask for that, so appreciate it.
Yep, just, uh, just give me a second here to get my, my bearings, and I think I, I believe I just stopped sharing. Hopefully that worked out.
We are good, we are good. But let me see, because you guys are actually going to see Mister Narayan again, so if I do everything correct here. Come on, it's not giving me my button. Hold on, there we go.
Hello, I'm Shayden Narayan, the city of Elk Grove's budget manager. My staff and I work with the city manager and other staff throughout the organization to prepare and manage a balanced budget that reflects the priorities of our community. The fiscal year twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two budget shows signs of economic recovery from the COVID nineteen pandemic and provides funding for city council priority projects. The new budget also maintains our high quality levels of service to residents and establishes healthy funding reserves. The city, state, and nation had experienced more than ten years of consecutive economic growth, leading up to twenty twenty. In March of twenty twenty, the COVID nineteen pandemic started a wave of economic impacts across multiple sectors and indicators. Fortunately, the city's primary revenue sources, such as property taxes and sales taxes, trended better than expected as we continue to see positive revenue growth since the early days of the pandemic. In early twenty twenty one, the federal government passed the American Rescue Plan Act aimed at providing additional stimulus funds for businesses and nonprofits. This source also provided the first direct assistance to local governments to compensate for lost revenue and costs associated with the response to the pandemic. Through this program, the city will receive nearly twenty two million dollars over two years. Thanks in part to your input, the city has allocated the first half of the funds to assist small businesses and nonprofits, address homelessness, and workforce development, and job training, and help the city and the Consumeness Community Services District cover their pandemic-related costs. Last year was a busy time for construction in the city. The construction of Oasis Park, Phase One of the Franklin Boulevard cycle track, Bon Road median improvements, and resurfacing. The city's annual pavement slurry seal and resurfacing, and Sheldon Road bike lanes and turn lanes projects were all completed last year. We'll maintain that momentum over the next two years with roadway and infrastructure improvements that will help Elk Grove residents travel and connect within the community. Here are some of the projects we're working on. This fiscal year, the city completed construction of Singin' Core Park, Old Town Plaza, and Railroad Street Improvement Projects. Construction will continue at the preserve and on the solar photovoltaic system at District Fifty Six, as well as on the Elk Grove Florin Road and Elk Grove Park sidewalk infill from Elk Grove High School to Elk Grove Park. Camera Road reconstruction from Bruceville to Lent Ranch, and on the second phase of widening of Grantline Road from Waterman to Bradshaw Roads. The Elk Grove City Council and staff take our responsibility to be good fiscal stewards of Elk Grove's tax dollars very seriously. To learn more about this year's city budget, please visit elkgrovecity.org slash budget.
Look is a look that can only happen by a roaring fire out of Verbo Cabin after eating rainbow trout.
And everyone viewing, I'm having my own sipping through, uh, the world of, uh, YouTube and making sure it, uh, stays where it's supposed to stay as we get the broadcast back up here. And just one moment. As I hop to our second video in our series.
Do you know how the animal shelter is funded, or who decides the budgets for schools and fixing roads? Do you know you have a say in how your tax dollars are spent? City Hall and several other agencies provide the services you receive in Elk Grove, such as schools, parks, and recreation, the fire department, garbage and recycling, transit, water, and sewer. These agencies are independent organizations with their own governing boards, staff, and budgets. City Hall provides services such as the animal shelter, road maintenance, business development, law enforcement, and more. Each year, we anticipate how much money will be collected through taxes and fees, and then consider the cost of existing services and inflation. We seek input from the community and receive direction from the city council to develop a budget for the year. The money that City Hall collects goes into two buckets, the general and the restricted funds. General fund money can be spent on a variety of services, but restricted funds can only be used for specific services. General fund money mostly comes from sales tax, property tax, utility tax, hotel tax, and utility franchise fees. Each property tax dollar is split between City Hall and other organizations who provide services in the city. As City Hall collects tax dollars, those dollars go into the general fund to pay for services like sheltering lost and found pets, supporting local businesses and nonprofit organizations, staffing, public events, and construction projects that enhance Elk Grove. Like the state budget, our city budget operates on a fiscal year calendar. Unlike a regular calendar year, our fiscal year starts on July first and ends on June thirtieth of the following year. The city council receives input from the community throughout the year to decide how much money should be spent for these services. Balancing the budget is how we provide the services the community wants and needs while still living within our means. Now, restricted funds are a little different. Restricted funds come from taxes and fees such as drainage fees, voter-approved taxes, gas tax, and development impact fees that are collected for specific services. The money collected for these services can only be spent on those services. For example, money collected from gas tax can only be used for road-related maintenance. It cannot be used for the animal shelter. As a resident, it is important to tell us how you'd like your tax dollars spent. You can do this every election year by voting for the city council candidate who most aligns with your fiscal priorities, participating in budget surveys and town halls throughout the year, or attending a city council meeting and speaking directly to the council during public comment. City Hall staff are available anytime to answer your questions via email at budget@elkrovecity.org. For more information about the current and upcoming budgets, visit elkrovecity.org slash budget. Now that you know more about City Hall's budget, provide your input to make a difference.
And I think that concludes the video portion, Mister Narayan. If you had any other slides or any items you wish to sit back up into the, into the arena, it's all yours.
Thank you very much, Jason. I appreciate it. I'm gonna attempt to reshare my, uh, screen again. Go back to, go back to the slides here, and I think I've done that, hopefully. Very good, very good, okay. So, uh, yeah, that concludes the presentation on the videos, and then, uh, concluding the, the entire item. I'm gonna go ahead and turn the agenda item over to council for public comment. Liberation and consideration of adopting a resolution amending the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two budget.
Thank you, Shay. Um, at this time, I will go ahead and open the public comment opportunity.
And for our attendees in the Zoom environment, now would be the opportunity to provide public comment on item nine point one. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, there were no written comments submitted prior to the meeting in relation to item nine point one. Taking my attention over to the list of attendees, I do not see the raised hand function being used by our, uh, audience online, uh, in our attendee listing, and that'll conclude public comment for item nine point one.
All right, I will close the public comment opportunity. And want to commend you, Shay. Those are, that's, those videos are amazing.
Well, I, I, I don't want to take, uh, all the credit, really. It's, it's fractioned me. It's a lot of public affairs and graphic design team collaboration, multi, multiple department collaboration.
Well, they were fantastic. Um, and thank you, everyone, that helped produce them. I'll start with, uh, Councilmember Hume, since his camera is on.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to echo your comments, uh, Shay, or, uh, the mayor's comments, rather. Shay, those were, uh, great videos. They were informative but digestible, and, and I think they really gave a lot of good information in a way that was, um, broken down and easy to understood and easy to appreciate, and hopefully provides a little better understanding of the decisions that we're making. So I would be happy to, um, make the motion to adopt staff's recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Spees.
I do have some questions, but yes, absolutely. First, I think we have a, a new YouTube star. I'm a little concerned. You're gonna leave the staff and, uh, become a YouTube star. Just stay away from the TikTok, my friend. So, um, so I just want to recapture something. Make sure I got it straight here. The single leg, the single largest contributor to, to twenty twenty one miss was due to the late timing of the Great Plates Delivered program payment from the state, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Yes. That, that, that is, that is correct. That is the largest variance, uh, in, in any of the general fund, uh, revenues and, and, and not very unexpected.
And completely beyond our control.
Right, we, Cal O E S and the federal government, right, beyond our control.
Hey, awesome, thanks. Um, now, we're still in, um, revenue neutrality with the county of Sacramento, and I think we're currently at sixty percent. Now, what year does that end?
FY twenty six.
Twenty six, okay. Um, and as I was going through the staff report, I wanted to call out some appreciation on the revenue surplus uh, from illegal cultivation enforcement, so. Thanks to code enforcement for that. Hey, that, that's, uh, it's, it's important, right? I make light of it, but, uh, I think, you know, cutting down on illegal cultivation is important. Um, I would like to ask my colleagues to consider bringing back, um, some education slash discussion on the pavement management program, the pavement condition index, and the budgetary implications. Uh, it's been a few years since I've seen that on the agenda, um, but I think it's a good conversation to have. Um, particularly for, you know, upcoming budgets and, and what we want to do in the future. Um, I wouldn't say that it needs to come back immediately, um, but within the next few months, uh, would, I think would be appropriate. So I'd like to get my, uh, colleagues to hopefully support that.
I, I could support that.
Yes, I'll support that.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then let's, uh, scratch a little deeper here. So it wasn't on the slides, it was in the staff report. Let's talk about table ten, fund three thirty two and three sixty. And then that's the Laguna Ridge supplemental park facilities fee and Laguna Ridge parks fee. So at the bottom of the table, uh, it states that revenue activity for these funds trended lower than projected for the majority of twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, and most severely in the spring months. Could you do me a favor and provide specific examples of these activities? What are the specific, um, budget act or revenue activities?
So the revenues for these fees are collected upon issuance of building permits for development projects, private blood development projects. Um, most notably residential projects, so subdivisions, that makes up the majority of the activity throughout the year. Um, which, which in this, when, when compared to a citywide fee, when you have an impact fee or a capital facilities fee in this case, that is focused on a pretty narrow, uh, regional area, such as Laguna Ridge. Uh, another example would be a C P A, Southeast Policy Area Fee, right, which is focused in a very narrow geographical area. There can be a lot of volatility when it comes to revenue projections and the revenue that's collected versus like a citywide fee, like roadway fee, affordable housing, or a library, uh, or a police, uh, capital facilities fee where, no matter where the development's happening, whether it's commercial, retail, or office, wherever it's happening in the city, um, uh, citywide, uh, fees, multiple projects are going to be paying into that. So when you're issuing permits for, for projects all over the city, you're going to pay into a lot of these citywide fees. Um, that's not the case for, for areas like Laguna Ridge. So that, that can result in, in years where the revenues significantly exceed budget and expectations, like in twenty eighteen, for example, that was a perfect, uh, uh, perfect example of when that occurred. And then the year before, twenty seventeen, uh, was a huge shortage, a very large, significant shortage. And so there's this up and down. Um, I, I, I want to shy away from saying this necessarily related to COVID because again, when you look at the citywide impact fee program, largely, uh, exceeded our ex, expectations and estimates. So these, these are a couple, um, of rare cases. I think to get into specifics of subdivisions that may have been delayed, if you will, in the planning process, or delayed tentative map or final map improvement stages, I'm going to refer to, uh, our Development Services Director, uh, Darren Wilson, to talk about any projects in, in that particular geographical area that may have been delayed at a mapping stage.
Yeah, thanks Shay. Darren Wilson, Development Services Director. Councilmember speaks. Every quarter, we do a budget forecaster, and it's based on tenant maps and final maps in the hopper that have been approved, and we do our best to stretch forecast that out each fiscal year, even out for five years, which is kind of crazy because it's it is a volatile market, even in a six month period. So in the case of Laguna Ridge, although we had the second largest number of permits issued in that fiscal year, fiscal year 21 in 15 years, those were more concentrated with within the city outside of Laguna Ridge. We had forecasted more in Laguna Ridge than had had occurred, which means I can tell you the phase three of these these southwest quad of Laguna Ridge is getting some synergy. Arbor Ranch, the 880 units, McGary Phase Two, Laguna, Tuscan Ridge West, Tuscan Ridge South. So there's definitely some movement down there that maybe, as Shay said, we recognize, you know, we may underforecast in future years where we expect some revenues and we get more just on the volatility of the market. I always say if if I got these things dead on every year, I would not be the Development Services Director. So it is, it is sometimes a tough forecast. I do consult with our home builders on what they're seeing, the BIA on occasion. But it just shows that it's very hard market sometimes to predict.
Okay, so then, I mean, go ahead and stay there for a quick second, Darren, because this might still be in your neck of the woods here. So for Fund 332, the FY '21 actual was, let's just say, $1.5 million. It was just short of that, right? But in the current budget, right, the 2022 budget document, we're projecting $2.1 million, which is essentially a return to what we had forecasted in FY '21. Right, it's just above what we forecasted for '21. So what I'm hearing you say is that you expect that to return back to some semblance of normality?
That's the expectations.
Okay. All right, and if and if you get it right, then you're gonna quit and you're gonna go.
Well, no, I I won't quit if I get it right once.
Oh, okay, because we would have a casino that you could go ahead and and gamble there. Okay. Um, I think those are my questions. I think there's a motion. I'm happy to give a second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hume. Councilwoman Hume soon.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just also wanted to say Shay, very good job in in the video and also committing the staff. The only thing I would add is that for those, you know, who may watch the video, to take note of the property tax graphic that that you guys put in that fact sheet, right? We only get three and a half cents today, you know, absent revenue neutrality, and up to 5.8 cents of every property tax dollar. So want to make sure folks realize that. But again, great job, very informative.
Vice Mayor Winn?
Just to add that, Mr. Narine, that that really was an enjoyable video to watch. It's always hard to make a video when you talk about budget and fiscal that folks can understand and appreciate and enjoy. And I really enjoyed the video that you and the team put together. Well done on the presentation and always happy to hear some great news. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add that, you know, what I'm seeing here is that we're in good financial health and we are recovering. Not 100% there, but we are, we're doing a lot better than actually a lot of other municipalities. So that makes me happy. And I'm not surprised on the TOT numbers. It's the industry I work in. I'm a statewide commissioner for Visit California, and we just had a recent board meeting where a lot of the the major brands were present and talked about their numbers. And we're seeing a comeback in those destination markets. We're not quite a destination market just yet, but hope to be one day. But, you know, what we're, what this really reflects is that that significant dip in business travel. A lot of companies still haven't authorized that for for meetings, and particularly even events and conferences. We're just now starting to see some of that come back slowly but surely. So those numbers aren't unique. There's even estimations that it may take a couple of years to get to 2019 numbers as it relates to occupancy. So depending where we're at, so no surprise there, but a great report, great videos, and just like great to see that we are recovering. But we do have a motion and a second on the floor.
With that motion and the second for the resolution of item 9.1, I will start the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Spees.
Hi.
Councilmember Hume.
Hi.
Councilmember Soon.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Winn.
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
Resolution of item 9.1 will pass by vote.
All right, thank you. Next item, please. Thank you Shay.
I'll take us on to item 9.2, which is to receive information related to currently available 2020 census data.
Good evening. I'm not sure. This is Carrie Whitlock. I'm not sure. Can you see me okay on the video or is the background a little off? Okay.
You are completely camouflaged.
Yeah, I'm seeing that as well. So let me try to fix that and see if I can get something.
We see your hand.
Up.
Your hand has appeared.
Really? Let's see. That's very.
But what may help is if you do have a PowerPoint for this evening, it may be helpful to
I can just do that.
Into the share screen and go from there.
Okay.
Believe this one is recently unexplained.
Yep. Okay. So can you see my screen or not yet?
We can't see your screen and then and please proceed. You're you're gonna do your own mystery thing with your with your video.
I might just stop the video and just leave my share screen. Okay. So, good evening all. I'm Carrie Whitlock, Strategic Planning and Innovation Program Manager. As you all know, the 2020 census was conducted last year between March and October. The city worked closely with the Sacramento Complete Count Committee on an exhaustive extensive public engagement effort that resulted in a self response rate of over 80% for Elk Grove residents. In September, the Census Bureau released some initial data from the 2020 census, and this is only partial data. It's focused primarily on what was needed for congressional apportionment and redistricting efforts. So it does include information on race and ethnicity. It includes information on the proportion of population age 18 years and older. And so the city GIS team helped to put together this great dashboard that provides data that has been released to date, and this is going to be up on our city website, so anybody can access and look at what's there. Overall, the population of Elk Grove grew by about 15.1% between 2010 and 2020. So we went from 153,000 people to just over 176,000 people during that time. This is the second highest growth rate in Sacramento County. It's also higher than the county as a whole. Sacramento County growth rate was about 11.7%, and it's higher than the country as a whole as well. The country grew at about a 7.4% rate. So we have other tabs here, and I'm going to switch over. There's a tab here on race and race and ethnicity. I want to sort of start by saying there were some changes and improvements in the design and the data processing for questions around race between 2010 and 2020. And so this allows for more accurate indications of how people really self identify, but it also means that it's comparisons between these should be, you know, a little bit cautious just to take that in mind. So the data does show continued diversity in Elk Grove. We remain majority minority population with over 50% of the population identifying as non white. For the first time, Asian alone makes up the most populous group, having increased from about 26.3% in 2010 to 33.5% in 2020. At the same time, the white alone population decreased from 46.1 to 32.6% between the two periods. You can also see a large increase in the population identifying as two or more races, which went from 7.9% in 2010 to 13.8% in 2020. So it almost doubled during the time period. So this growth in population identifying as two or more races is likely partially to account for why we see the decrease in white alone population with more people identifying as as being multiracial. So the second line here, you can see is more than 100% of our population. That's because this 13.8% that identifies as two or more races is counted then in each of the categories that they selected. So this category for for white at 44.4 includes anybody who said they were white alone or white in combination with any other race. I also wanted to say in the census, so ethnicity for the US Census is counted as Hispanic or Latino and non Hispanic or Latino, and you can see that the percent of the population between 2010 and 2020 remained fairly steady. It grew by just one percentage point from 18% in 2010 to almost 19% in 2020. So then this last tab is an interactive map. So what you can do is actually zoom in on any neighborhood in Elk Grove and see the diversity present at the smallest levels. So if you start with this level, you can click on any of the boxes here, and it will come up with this is the census track level, and it tells you the total population for that census track. 3,800 people, and then you can look at the breakdown by race for that census track. These are individuals who identified as a race alone. So you'll see here there is two or more races as well. There's another, if you if you click the little arrow here, you can see these are individuals who it takes those people who identified as two or more races and puts them into the different racial groups that they identified with. So it's all the people that identified as African American or Asian. And then if you keep hitting the arrow, you can see the Hispanic and Latino population for that census track. And you can zoom in on any of these areas, and as you zoom in, you will get to additional levels of information. So this is then the block group level, and you can click on that, and it gives you the same charts with the total number, the race for all races combined, and then the Hispanic population. And zooming in again, sorry, I keep zooming the wrong way. Zooming in again will take you to the block level, which is the smallest geography that the census collects data on. And so you can see, click on any particular neighborhood, and you can see the population here is 61 people. The largest are two or more races that makes up the most populous for this particular neighborhood, and the Hispanic population is about 23% for that neighborhood. There is also a search feature, so if you wanted to search for your own particular address, and I am not going to put in mine, but I will put in City Hall. It will take you there, and you can see then the particular population for your particular location. You can look at the data for your neighborhood if you want to zoom in there. So the one other thing that I wanted to mention that is not yet in this dashboard is the population age 18 and over. We're waiting to get the full release of population by age groups before we put it into the dashboard. The data does show that Elk Grove's youth population has declined over the decade with the population under the age of 18 was 31.1, or sorry, 30.1% of the population in 2010, and that's gone down to 25.4% of the population in 2020. And this decline has occurred across to varying percentages across all race and ethnic groups. So those who identified as two or more races declined by about 14.8% in that youth age group, whereas Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander alone declined by just 2.5% in that age group. This trend is also similar to one seen across the country. The population, the youth population in the country as a whole declined from about 24% to 22% between 2010 and 2020. And then finally, as I mentioned, as we get more information from the census, which will probably be released sometime in the spring, then we will be adding that data to this dashboard. And with that, I will take any questions that people might have.
All right, thank you for that excellent presentation. I will go ahead and open the public comment opportunity.
And for participants in the Zoom environment, this will be the opportunity to provide public comment on item 9.2 on the agenda. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members, there were no written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting in relation to item 9.2. As I look over our list of attendee participants in the Zoom environment, I am not seeing the raised hand function being utilized. That'll conclude public comment for item 9.2.
All right, I'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and open up for any council comments. Questions, we can start with Councilwoman Hume.
I thank you, Mayor. No comments. Appreciate the information, Carrie. Very good presentation.
Councilwoman speaks.
I don't have any other comments. Thank you as well for the for the presentation.
Councilwoman Hume?
Fantastic presentation, and it's amazing how you can drill down block by block. I do have one question, and it's simply curiosity. When I see something that piques my interest, I want to learn about it. And so why is it, Carrie, if you know, why is ethnicity simply Hispanic, Latino, or not Hispanic Latino? Why is that the only distinction made in that category?
So that would be federal law. So the Census Bureau follows OMB guidelines on race and ethnicity, and so it is OMB guidelines on how that is defined.
Do you have any idea why that's the case?
I have no idea why that is the case, no.
Intriguing, isn't it? Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Winn?
No comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. As we see, there's clearly population growth in Elk Grove, and the diversity is fabulous to see. So a direct nexus of the population growth will be, you know, what we do with the census data as it relates to the redistricting process. If I could just get this city clerk to just, for those that are paying attention to this, when is the city, we've talked about Senate, the congressional, even our local supervisory redistricting process. Can you just give a quick update because it does directly relate to this?
Certainly, Mayor. Yeah, one of the nice elements is with the city of Elk Grove, we will not have an election until November of 2022. What you're seeing right now is a lot of the activity is for all the governmental agencies that have to make a deadline for the June primary. So they need to have their maps prior to and their districts drawn prior to any kind of electoral processes that would occur with candidates. And so they're on much a tighter timeline. You might hear that in the news. You might hear folks talking about, oh, we got to get these maps completed, and we have to have them done. For them, I'm not quite sure what their deadlines are, but I know it's close to the end of the year. They want to have most of their maps approved and ready to go so that the candidates know where they stand as far as running for office. When it comes down for the city of Elk Grove, part of what we've been doing is with the delay on the census data, and also just watching to see how things developed with our other partner agencies that do have these tighter timelines. Our target timeline is to commence the process in January of next year, and we anticipate being able to run that process. It's a little bit different under election state code with a series of public hearings, but it's very familiar to what we did when we made the transition to by district elections. But we'll see a process where we have these public comment opportunities, and it will run for a series of a couple of months. I'm anticipating at least if not January to March into April. So but then our target is to be wrapped up and to have approved district maps prior to our our nomination process, which doesn't start till mid-year of 2022. But we're going to be targeting getting the process wrapped up, if not in April and May, so that we have ample time for folks to have an idea of where they can run for office. So.
Okay, well, thank you for that follow up. And there were no other follow up questions or recommendations, so thank you for that report. So we will move on to our next, which is our council comments, reports, and future agenda items. So we will move on to our next, which is our council comments reports and future agenda items. I will go ahead and start with Councilmember Spees.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's see, I think I only had two things. On the nineteenth, we had the Sacramento Zoo Tour and barbecue. I'm sure there will be more that others will want to share, so I'll leave that there. The Sacramento Public Library interviews were on the twenty first and the twenty second. We are progressing on with our search for a new director and we're hoping to have some news that we can share publicly in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hume.
Yeah, I'll keep mine very short. Had a RT meeting on Monday and the sanitation district board meeting was canceled this morning. And there is a Capital Southeast Connector JPA meeting Friday morning that I'm going to try and participate in for one item, but it conflicts with our local economic symposium put on by the chamber. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Sune.
Thank you, Mayor. We just had our SECOC board meeting last Thursday where we adopted the next generation transit strategy. And then that with the rest of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Wen.
Nothing to add.
All right, I have a few updates. We did have our two by two with the Elk Grove Unified School District. There was a, we haven't had one, I know, at least in the last year or so. So it was good to have those moving forward, you know, having that meeting and then planning out strategies for the rest of the year. We talked about new school planning, traffic safety, student transit program, our Afghan refugees. And even we were able to talk a little bit about the zoo. I did participate in a study mission with the Sacramento Zoological Society and several city staff to Fresno. And then next week there will be another study mission in Houston as we do our due diligence and feasibility study in examining different habitats, animals and so forth. Let's see, we did talk a little bit. Mr. Beerman mentioned the California Citizens Redistricting Commission. I just really want to draw everyone's attention in our community. There are maps that are in circulation that are vastly different than our current map, our current assembly and Senate districts. One map has us in Solana County, another one includes us in San Joaquin County. So it is very important for the community to be engaged in this process, but more importantly, to submit comments and let the commission know where you stand on these different maps. Because ultimately, while this is an independent commission, one of, you know, several criterias that they have to look at includes population equality, having a contiguous territory, being fair for representation of minority groups, keeping our communities of interest intact. Those are just some of the basic criterias as this process unfolds. And so we are in in October, December, where some of the things that they're looking at is line drawing meetings, draft maps, community meetings, community input. And then that final map and certification will take place at the end of the year in December. So it is important, I know city staff is looking at bringing together a forum so that it's sort of, it'll be done virtually. So there's an opportunity to hopefully hear from the commission because one of the things they do is host online town halls and do an update of not only the proposed maps, but the process. So if we're able to schedule that with them, if not, we're looking at scheduling one nonetheless to keep the community informed and engaged and invite comments. Because as I stated, some of those maps are vastly different than what we see today. And that all obviously would impact who would be sort of the best spokespersons and representatives for our city and having an influence and a voice at the Capitol. So it is important to stay involved as it is for all of our district redistricting process for the city of Elk Grove, the county, as well as on the state level. There will be a a virtual town hall hosted by by Supervisor Natoli. It will be on November the ninth and that is to really give give everyone an update as it relates to Afghan refugees and other agencies and nonprofits will be participating. And it is in the evening at six o'clock, I believe, on again, November the ninth. Supervisor Natoli giving us sort of a report and having a conversation as it relates to the Afghan refugees in our community and in our county. That is all I have. So I want to thank everyone. And it is eight forty eight, eight forty eight. We will adjourn the meeting. Have a great evening, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.